Recommendation last time was to perhaps talk with the legislature about adopting a special act which would provide us with some form of regulatory oversight or jurisdiction with respect to the watershed.
Yes, yes.
And I would like to raise that as from, as a recommendation from the council, if you're in agreement with that, that we then ask Jerry Pauls to come at some time in the future to talk about that specifically and what might be a possibility of our dealing with that next year's legislative session.
Absolutely.
Is that, is that agreeable?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So, to catch up where we are, we're getting the copies. We haven't received them yet. I've asked Joan, because the next step is to look at swift muds permits, because it appears that most of the mines, if they have a state permit, it would be a swift mud permit. And Joan's going to assist in setting up an opportunity for me to review the files out of their Sarasota office, which is convenient. And then I'll have the second of the three parts that I need to take a look at.
Just.
Yes.
I could a couple of comments. So, we, we are, there is no specific permitting for a mine and a watershed, correct? As far as we know?
No. If at all, it would be part of the overall review of the impact.
Yes, okay. But there are no specific criteria for, to get a permit for a mine that is within a watershed. Within a wetland, yes, but if it's within a watershed, there is no different criteria?
I think that's correct.
Okay. What, what swift mud, what I, what I got from swift mud is they refer you back to Florida statutes, that, that the permit be consistent with the public, that in order to get a permit for a minefield in general, that a mine in general, it needs to be consistent with the public interest and not interfere with any present, presently existing legal use of water. We don't know if that's, if the permits reflect that. You will find that out, I would think.
Yes, and from what I've seen so far, they really don't. And again, what I, what I'm, what I'm going upon is when the, there was a mine, Loop Mine, I forget what it was, the specific name for it, but, but there was a mine application that was processed a few years back through the county. And the county hired an environmental consultant to review the application and report back. And, and the review that that consultant did is consistent with what I perceive the reviews ought to be, and that is to actually either, well, it's the burden of the applicant to prove that they're not going to adversely affect the water source. It's not the burden of the county to say, without, you know, it's not the burden of the county to prove that there's going to be a violation, otherwise they have to issue the per, I mean, otherwise they have to issue the permit. And what the consultant correctly identified, based on what they reviewed, was the applicant did not present sufficient water quantity data to demonstrate that they weren't going to adversely affect the sufficient aquifer serving Shell Creek. And, and in the absence of that, lack of sufficient information, the county agreed that this mine didn't meet the requirements and therefore the permit was not issued. That requirement, however, was probably not imposed upon these mines that are currently there. Ultimately, I would like to see language that would say that if there's going to be any extension or renewal of any permit, then that would be a requirement to present the water balance, to demonstrate there would not be any adverse impact.
Yes, Rachel.
I'm worried about the records. I mean, don't we have public record protections? I mean, are they playing within those rules or?
Yeah, I mean, there's, well, yes, they are. I mean, there's, they're not trying to hide anything. The county, and probably I'm going to find the state too, was not looking for the stuff that we want them to be looking for, for putting a mine into a watershed. You know, the standard, the standard things that they would be looking for are impacts to water, to, to wetlands, you know, are you going to be mining in the wetland? And if you are wiping out wetlands, then you need to mitigate for that impact. Okay, and that's, and there's some of that in there. If they were actually physically pumping out water from a deeper aquifer for irrigation purposes or what have you, there needs to be some sort of demonstration with respect to that impact, cone of discharge, et cetera. But with respect to the, how much water is going to be taken out of the system as a result of your mine, which is what we are concerned about, there was nothing like that in there because it wasn't asked for.
David, wouldn't it also be your requirement to accompany, to accompany the permit that a mapping should be done indicating where the tributary is relative to where the mine is going to be located?
Yeah, I think they have that, actually. I mean, it.
I spoke with Joan about that, and we, I was looking to get that information. I, I got the impression it was not available from the county. They couldn't locate the tributaries relative to the mine location.
Well, I'm not sure what, what Joan might have said, but, I mean, they, they present maps and they, and they show you, you know, kind of where, what I say that they, depends on what application you're seeing and how old the application was and whether that application was complete in the county's files. I would suspect, quite frankly, because the answer we got from the county when I was asking them, when we were all together, questions about their permits, they were pretty much ignorant about their own permits because they, they basically deferred to swift mud for doing the permitting, and a swift mud permit, it's good enough for them. And the, they, they submit, when I say they, the county submits the application to a hearing, a local hearing examiner. And that hearing really was a joke. I mean, it really was. There wasn't any evidence necessarily presented other than the application, and it was kind of rubber stamped. So, I mean, I, that's not to say that had we known back then that there was this hearing, and had we participated in the hearing, we might have been able to do a better job of protecting the city's resources. Maybe, maybe. But I'm fairly certain that we weren't notified of any of these requests, and these applications, really. I mean, I think the most recent one was 2011, so it just had been out of the loop.
In some of the conversations, I've heard that there was, you know, threats of Burt Harris lawsuits. I mean, is that factoring into it that you see or not on the county's side or?
You know, an applicant, a mine, a permitee is always going to threaten Burt Harris or other litigation in order to put some fear in the decision maker. Anybody can make that threat, whether there's any basis to it, you know, I would, I would disagree. And again, it, it also depends on what ultimately is trying to be protected. And if the regulation, I mean, that's why there's an expiration date on a permit. And there's been some relief that was given at the legislature for, because of, because of the economy, to give a couple more years to expiring permits, and they have done, have run that course. I'm not prepared to give a full-blown legal opinion on each of those mines as to whether or not the county would be in a taking situation to deny the extension. But even in that situation, I think you can still provide a certain threshold of, of a requirement of demonstrating that you're not going to adversely impact the environment, important resource, when you grant a renewal. Because I don't think there's any court in the world that's going to say you're entitled to renew the permit even though you're polluting the entire water source, or drinking water. So, I can, I can understand if the county was afraid of being sued, how that might have layered into their decision-making process, but, you know, that shouldn't stop us from trying to protect our interests.
So, right now, you're going to be reviewing the documentation and then going back to the county staff, is that correct?
Well, I'll come back to you first.
Okay.
I mean, I, we're early on in the process with respect to the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, and, and, and there's plenty of time for me to do the research I need to do and make my report to you and tell you what I've found. This is a very preliminary position, and it could very well be that I'm going to find that the swift mud permits did take Shell Creek into consideration. I don't know until I see it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that. City Clerk?
Yes, under boards and committees, we have a continuing vacancy for two alternates on the Historic Reservation Advisory Board. We have a three-year term as a regular member on the Utility Advisory Board. Under appointments, we do have one, that's the Punta Gorda Housing Authority. Voting forms are being distributed. Please vote for one. You have three eligible applicants.
I have two here. Pass those, I'll give you one. Here you go.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thanks, Karen.
Thank you. All right, then, moving along. I have a number of items. I'm wondering whether we should take a break. But I'll begin here.
Keep going.
Keep going. Okay, okay, okay.
They're your items, you've got to live with them now.
Okay, thank you. We have, the first one is the U.S. Department of Transportation's Mayor's Challenge for Safer People, Safer Streets. And this fits very well in with our proclamation that we did today for Bicycle Month. But it again is challenging the mayors and our local elected officials to take significant action to improve safety for bicycle riders and pedestrians of all ages and abilities over the next year. We're already doing so many of the things that, that's being recommended, and you've seen the documentation. So, I guess I would like for us to formally acknowledge that we are taking this challenge, and I can then write the letter in saying that our city is taking this challenge. Basically, it's a public statement about the importance of bicycle and pedestrian safety, that we have a local action team already in place in terms of Team Punta Gorda that's working with our city staff. Some of the activities, Complete Streets Approach, we already have that, to address, identify and address barriers, to make streets safe and convenient for all road users. I think we have some work to do on that, and I think, but we're in the process of working on that. Use designs that are appropriate to the context of streets and its uses. I think our staff are doing that as we, we move forward. Opportunities to create and complete ped bike networks through maintenance, we're doing that. Improve walking and biking safety laws and regulations, we're, again, we're working on that through our police department and through Team Punta Gorda. Educate and enforce proper road use behavior by all. We are doing some of that, we've got to do more. And I think that.
I agree.
That we were, we were talking about that. So, that, if it's agreeable with you, we'll, we'll move forward on that.
Yep.
The second one is, it was brought to our attention that we are not a Purple Heart city, and a, there are many cities, municipalities around the country, as well as counties. Charlotte County now is a Purple Heart county. It basically recognizes members of the armed forces who are wounded or killed in combat with a declared enemy of the United States. So, it's, the military order of the Purple Heart fosters an environment of goodwill for combat wounded veterans and their families. I would think that we have a number of Purple Heart recipients in our community. This fills in and goes very well with what we're doing in terms of our Vietnam Wall and our Veterans Gardens. So, it does seem that very appropriate for us to be identified as a Purple Heart city. And I would like for us to have a proclamation at our next meet, not our next meeting, I think it'll be the April 1st, Karen. I think it'll be April 1st, in which we will have both the person to accept this, but also then to invite our Purple Heart recipients from the county.
A question, are there any specific requirements that we must meet in order to, I know the, the county has put in parking spots specifically designated?
No, there is, there is not. There is not. There is nothing, there is no cost to it, there is nothing specific. It's recognizing, our city recognizes our Purple Heart recipients, and again, through the proclamation, but I think it just all builds and fits in with everything that we're all doing for our veterans.
I'll bless you.
Yes, God bless you.
Bless you.
So, that's agreeable?
I agree.
Is there a Veteran Month, like there is, like Black History or anything like that?
It's Veterans, Veterans Day.
Veterans Day, yeah. Yeah.
Are we okay?
Yeah.
All righty. The next item, as you know, we sent a letter to Representative Clay Ingram with regards to our Vietnam Wall, in terms, he's the chair of the committee that's going to be looking at appropriations for that. So, that has been sent out, again, fitting in with our veterans. We all, except unfortunately, Kim wasn't able to make it to Senator Ben Aquistos' luncheon. We had presentations there, which, again, basically reiterated much of what you've read in the paper about what the legislative agenda is going to be. In conversation, very brief conversation with her, she acknowledged that they are working on our funding for our RRO plant. So, and I know a number of you have talked with other people, you know, at the luncheon, but I think we've, feeling that there is support there, so we're, keep plugging our way at that. Went to the session at Drug Free Charlotte up in Murdoch this past week, and again, I guess I am just always amazed when we have 10 and 11-year-olds who are starting to use tobacco, alcohol, and marijuana in our community. And I, I know you're working on that in Punta Gorda, so we'll want to hear more about what's going on there. But the last item is regarding underground utilities. The issue that came up with BSI, in which they were having the two large concrete posts put there right at their entryway, right at the gateway of their community. And I had met with Charlotte Miller, and I had asked her and, and her colleague that came with her, whether or not, because Bernstor is also talking about perhaps putting in underground wiring, could they have done something different in that area? And she said, oh, sure. And it's like, we didn't know ahead of time. So, I've asked her to provide us with kind of a listing of what they're going to be doing in the future that will have cost implications, that if they didn't do it, perhaps could be used for something else. Like, the only additional charge on that would have been for the underground rather than, than using all that money. They are going to be hardening, and this is something that BSI needs to know, they are going to be hardening a whole big area of BSI, which means that they're going to be putting in significant money to put up more of the larger concrete line holders, the poles and what have you. And that money that they're using for hardening could be used, my, you know.
Right.
Subtract out the money that could be used for underground wiring.
That's been my contention with Charlotte in my one-on-one conversations with her. And I take this back to the fact that FPL received the Malcolm Baldrige Award back in, I want to say it was the 90s, but they were like the, they were the epitome of companies doing it right in the United States. I know my company was all over wanting to visit Florida Power and Light to see what it is they do. And in my conversation with her, as I said, Edward Deming, who the Malcolm Baldrige Board is based on, would just have a fit, that the way you're not partnering with communities to do things. And, and I've said the exact same thing that you said, and she, and the reply is now, well, we're governed by the tariffs.
Excuse me, what?
Governed by the tariffs. What a tariff is.
What a tariff is.
A tariff is T-A-R-I-F-F. A tariff is, they work with the, they're, they are governed by the Public Utilities Commission of Florida, or whatever the name is. And they have to submit to them, they have this, these books, big binders of books, and everything is spelled out in these books. If we go out and we dig a hole, this is what we have to charge somebody, and it's in the tariffs. So, all that stuff that they do, and they're telling BSI now, it's in the tariffs. So, and I'm in a listening mode, but I'm, you know, we may need to, I've kind of been thinking, I'm mulling this over in my mind, there could be Public Utilities Commission work that needs to happen. And I don't know that this, I don't know if the city really needs to be involved, it's the BSI, but I know myself, in the past, as a, as a resident in Ohio, when I had issues, I actually wrote letters to the Public Utilities Commission, and I got action quickly. So.
Well, I think in terms of this particular issue for BSI, if they're hardening now, or going to be hardening in 2015, BSI needs to know that, so that that activity can stop before it begins, so that they can utilize what money's FPNL would spend on the hardening and use that for the underground.
So, what you're saying is they're going to harden even beyond what they've already done?
Oh, yes.
She didn't tell us that.
Oh, yes. Significant amount. Significant amount of, you know, if you look at.
We're going to be having, the, the committee is going to be having, calling a meeting with her, and thank you for the information, I'll.
Please.
Bring that up.
So, it, it's part of that discussion.
Because they have not offered up that information.
As part of that discussion, then, it's like, well, what are you doing, you know, in the future? Can we get your plan, you know? Okay, now, that's 15, that's going to be moving along very quickly. 2016, they're going to be hardening all the way up Marion Avenue. Well, I doubt very much that we can do anything in terms of underground wiring on Marion Avenue. I don't, I don't see that happening, unfortunately. But what I think we can do is to establish an ordinance that all future development incorporate underground wiring. Collier has it, Fernando Beach has it, we just started to take a look, I asked Karen to take a look. The other was.
Dania Beach.
Dania Beach has it. And basically, it's an ordinance, so then any new, I'm not saying that, you know, we have to go back and put it in BSI or whatever, but that any new development, and most of the new developments are doing that, most of the developers will be putting in underground wiring. But at least this way, we will start looking at, again, the ambiance, you know, what we're doing in, in our overall community.
I have underground utilities in my neighborhood.
Yeah.
But we really don't have a land mass where we would really have a new development, do we? Where would we?
The Loop.
The Loop.
Okay.
But they're going to do it anyway.
Okay.
Well, they would do it anyway, but then there are going to be other properties that will maybe be annexed or whatever, that would go on. Anything new that happens even in, even PGI, I think they should plan for underground wiring.
So, they're planning on putting those big poles along Marion?
Yes.
Where?
I assume if they're doing hardening.
Come take a ride in BSI, go down Monaco, and you'll see some large, what the residents are calling the concrete obelisks. They're right by Veterans Park. Yeah, they are. And there is at the corner of Monaco and Madrid, I feel sorry for the poor owner of the vacant lot, who probably lives in Timbuctoo, and if they come down here and see what happened to their lot, it's not very nice. Yeah. I mean, our streets can't, I mean, Marion, really? Like, where would it be?
They, they can do it.
Yeah, they have the right of.
They have the right of way to do it.
They, they have been given this by Florida statute, and.
But I think we should also be looking at, can we talk with them about alternatives?
Absolutely.
You know, what are the alternatives? I kept talking with Charlotte, and I forget the gentleman's name that met with.
I don't know. I, I followed up, because they called me and said, can you get down here?
And, but said, there's so much new technology out there, surely. You know, there's some smart people out there. I wish it were me, it's not, that could actually, you know, do something different or design something different, so that it makes it more aesthetically pleasing. So, but I wanted to share that with you, in particular.
Thank you. Thank you. I will let them know.
For BSI.
Let them know.
That's what I have. Rachel, anything?
Do you have something else?
So, with regards to Marion, it's a, it's a completed?
Well, they're going to be hardening. Now, what that looks like, again, I, I don't expect that we could anticipate that any of the homeowners along there would be willing to pay the extra for underground wiring.
I'm really not familiar with it. Is there only one method to harden? What, like, just replacing the poles, is that what they're doing?
What I understand is they're putting in new, I don't even know what you call them, their, their major.
Do you want me to tell you what they did?
Concrete.
They put in, what they do is, where there are existing telephone poles, as we call them, utility poles, they put in a, one that has a greater diameter, so that they are more, can withstand, what they're doing is they're upgrading it so that it can withstand winds up to 130 miles an hour. And so, these are supposed to meet that criteria, and they're taller, and by, they said 10 feet when I talked to somebody, but it seems like a lot taller than 10 feet. And they've moved all that. What in BSI, there's still, the old poles are still there, because they can move Comcast, but they can't move Century Link. So, Century Link's wires are on the old poles, and I guess Century Link is going to be moving those, but until they do, the old poles are still in place. And then, every so often, they put in these big concrete poles.
And it, those are the ones, I think, well, it's the base or whatever that they need to upgrade all the wiring.
Right. But what's happened is, to the residents, the shorter poles were more in the vista of the tree canopy, so you really didn't see them as much. Well, now, the, the palm canopy, now the, the taller poles are above the palm canopy, and so, it's very obvious that you see the, the wires.
Karen, can you invite Charlotte to come give us a presentation at our city council meeting?
I think that would be a very nice idea.
And so, we're all on board with what their plan is, and we can have our citizens come and have comment?
Good idea, Rachel.
There are different composite materials that maybe could be used in lieu of concrete, I don't know, you know, they've, they've done that on sailboats. We have standing, we have a mast that doesn't need any, any, any wire to hold it. It's, there are different things possibly out there that we can look at, we'll learn about.
I think that would be a good idea.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Good idea.
Okay. But I just, I wanted to raise that issue.
Thank you.
Yes, very good.
Thank you.
Rachel, did you have anything else?
The Navy Band was great. I already said it under CRA, it was fabulous. I think that's all I have.
Tom?
Oh, thank you.
I just wanted to say, yes, the Drug, the Drug Free Punta Gorda is coming along, and the why, actually, I've been talking with them about perhaps doing a dance for the junior high and the high school at the Bayfront Center once a month. We're trying to work on that, also working with Cooper Street to try to get something going there at the rec center. There's a lot, a lot going on. I was invited to a meeting last Friday by a gentleman who wishes to remain nameless right now in Charlotte County, who is, is offering an 8,000-square-foot building to be renovated for a youth center, for everyone.
In Charlotte County?
In Charlotte County, up by the mall, actually, it'd be in that area. And it will, and, I mean, it kind of has a plan that would just be phenomenal for our youth, really.
Thank you. Nancy?
Several things. I've got a request from a resident, and I thought I'd ask you, since you're on the MPO, if anything has ever come out of any traffic studies at the corner, at Actline and US 41.
I think they're still working on that.
Are they?
I think they're still working on that, but we can bring that up again at the MPO.
Yeah, I just asked.
Actline Road.
And US 41. The concern is that the, the muscle car city is going to be moving into the Sweet Bay property, and a lot of car events are held over at the old Walmart, and now they're going to be having lots of cars all over the place.
You know what, I already, I saw that, and I already passed it along to Bob Harrington as well, for, you know, discussion, so, yes.
And would we want to put the Waterfront Activities Center on a future council meeting? Just to discuss the possibility of doing some kind of.
Yeah, a little bit later on.
We don't have to do it now, but I'm just.
Yes.
It could be a couple, you know, months, a couple of months from now, whatever.
Maybe when, when do we look at our strategic plan again? Maybe that would be a time to do it, possibly.
That wouldn't be until?
It'd be a June, July timeframe.
That would be good.
That's plenty of time.
That's plenty of time, yeah. Yeah, Nancy Johnson's going to be on a sailing trip anyway, so it's, this is a thought. Okay, great. Then, we have an item on the agenda that has to do with the Regional Planning Councils.
Oh, yes, that's.
And since I sit on the Regional Planning Council, and the legislation's been introduced to completely do away with the Regional Planning Council, and the Regional Planning Council has asked us, all the cities and counties to. That might be good.
That's plenty of time.
That's plenty of time.
Yeah, we'd go.
Yeah, Nancy Johnson's going to be on a sailing trip anyway, so it's, this is a thought.
Okay.
Great. Then, we have an item on the agenda that has to do with the Regional Planning Councils.
Oh, yes, that's...
And since I sit on the Regional Planning Council, and the legislation's been introduced to completely do away with the Regional Planning Council, and the Regional Planning Council has asked us, all the cities and counties to send letters of support, like, don't do away with us. And of course, we've seen Jerry Paul's response to us, like, don't you want local rule, home rule, and all that. And I think you said you wanted to get my input. And I will have to say, in the, in the year and a half that I've sat on the board, there hasn't been a lot of activity. It's been mostly rubber stamping things. Rachel sat on the board for quite a while. I know that when they were originally created, there were a lot of developers running out of control in the state. So it was really an effort to really put a lot of, make the local municipalities get more responsible about development. And so, what I asked a few people, what they said, well, it's been more of a lot of rubber stamping, because the cities and counties have gotten more responsible. And so what is brought to them has really been more thoroughly vetted. And so...
I guess that's what I was going to be wondering. What is your take and Rachel's take? You know, is there any value to keep them? Because it's just another bureaucracy, another...
Well, you know, I know that one person, Kit, from, has, you may know a gentleman, his first name's Kit, I can't think of his last name, Turner.
From Venice?
Oh, no, it's not Kit. Carson Turner.
Oh.
Well, has called, from, I think it's Hendry County, has referred to the RPC as a shark without teeth. They're really an advisory. They really don't, they can't really make any policies. In some cases, one of the things they do is emergency management. And it's like, I think, does Wayne Saliday really go to the Regional Planning Council for that? Don't they have a... So I'm, I'm looking at some of this, and I'm, you know, I want to be a supportive board member, but on the other hand, I, I like less government. I like having more home rule in, and... So I'm, I, as I discussed with Howard, I said, I'm conflicted.
I'm conflicted too, because they definitely serve a purpose, especially for Glades, Hendry. You know, a lot of like, take for example, Batcock Ranch, that's on Lee and Charlotte. So are you just going to leave it to Lee and Charlotte to fight it out? And then whose comp plan does it fall under? And who's overseeing that they don't impact the other county with what they're doing? I mean...
So what did the Regional Planning County Council do for that?
They, they, they issued DRIs, which are developments of regional impacts, and they go through all the state. They're coordinating the state agencies and giving, giving recommendations and conditions sometimes that are recommended by the board. So, I mean, it's a huge table, but everybody has a seat at it. I mean, every square inch of the state is, is in a Regional Planning Council. So everybody potentially has a way to have their input. So that part of it, I think, is helpful. Have they done a lot? No. Did they get bloated? Yes. Were they another layer that the developers see as maybe a hindrance, possibly?
Could someone from Collier put, you know, put a kibosh on something that we want to do here in Ponegorda?
No, but if, if there was an impact of some kind, they, I mean, they deal with huge, like the C-43 reservoir, and the, I mean, they talk about these really big, big projects that go on in the state, which if the Regional Planning Council wasn't there, then I guess the counties and cities would just have to rely on the state agencies and have their input in a, in a different way. And keeping track of that would be, would be difficult. I think Margaret has done a great job with our Regional Planning Council, keeping it afloat, writing grants. She did the SEDS program. She's done, they do flood plain map, they do a lot of mapping services. I mean, for, for small cities and even small counties that don't have the staff, the planning staff, they contract with them, and they do provide services. So, I mean, I'm okay with sending the resolution. I mean, I think the legislature is probably going to do whatever they want, but...
Tom?
I happened to watch one of the commission meetings a few weeks back, and they seemed to be very supportive of the Regional Planning Association. And I think, you know, Tom Patton is a big supporter of regionalism as, as well. And so I, I think that we should probably, we should support it.
Okay. Yes, Kim?
I think that, I, I agree, just because there's going to be so much growth in Florida coming, and for us to, we might need, you know, bigger things will be developed. And I did see something on the news, and if it's to be believed, it costs 30 cents per person to have the Regional Planning Council.
And we don't, the county pays for it. The city...
Yeah. The county contributes, Rachel's right, the county contributes 30, $50,000 a year. We are taxpayers to the county. So it does cost us personally, but doesn't come out of the city's actual budget.
And they said 30 cents.
And, so...
And we sent a letter to the Regional Planning Council, objecting to Charlotte County's Comprehensive Plan Amendment, because they're a commenting agency. And maybe because they're local, they might have a little bit more clout than, than the agency in Tennessee.
And I know they were really instrumental in what went down when FGCU was created, which was before both of our time, but the mitigation and all the plans that went on with the creation of that whole entire, probably Ave Maria as well, they, they do serve a purpose.
I would like to see Margaret really do like Lisa Beaver did, and really come to the individual municipalities or counties, and actually present a, here's what we've done for you.
She's done that in the past, I think.
Has she been here?
Yeah, she's come.
Has she?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Margaret, she's been here.
Yeah.
So we are supportive then? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, okay, with the resolution.
It sounds like it. There was a resolution that was presented to us. It's quite long.
Do we need a letter? Is that what they're asking for, is a letter of support?
They're asking for us to adopt the resolution.
They're asking us for to adopt the, the resolution, and it was this, a sample resolution that was given. It's quite long, but...
Let's see, I think I read the top part. I didn't go through the specifics.
Yeah, I'd have to go back, and I didn't memorize it word for word, so...
Carolyn, if you want to shorten it, I mean, whatever...
I would, I would say if you'd like to do an abbreviated version, I'd be, I can't work with you on it, so, but if you'd like to do an abbreviated version of it.
Well, since you are...
Want me to do that?
I would think that, because you're the representative, why don't you take a look at it? And if we need to sign off on the whole thing, that would be fine. But we could do that at the next council meeting then. Is that correct?
I think they need it right away.
We probably need to send it.
I think we need it right away. So what I probably need to do is take a whack at it, and maybe work with Mikhail.
You know what? The first, the first paragraph that takes up about a third of the page is simply a summary. It's not actually part of the resolution. So if you put the resolution pretty much the way they have drafted it, but make it for our signature, it probably would fit on one page.
Okay, just almost.
Yeah, if you want, Mikhail and I can work on it.
Okay, that would be great.
That would be great.
Thank you.
So you're okay adopting the resolution in its...
With the modified form.
Modified form.
Yes. That would be handled by our city attorney.
Okay.
Okay.
Good. I have one more thing. And that is, it's March, it's the first of March, and I wanted to let you know that now that I've got my wheels pretty much under me, I have more progress to make, but I wanted to let you know that I, you know, I've thought about this, and, and I wanted to put it out there, that I'm planning on seeking another term in office, and, because this is the year. So I said I wanted to do that, and put it out there. I love, it's really enjoy, enjoyable serving the community, working with a great staff, and working with a great team, city council members, so...
Glad you are.